Oh, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the first Planning Commission meeting of the year 2015. Happy New Year to you. We're starting a little late. We had to take an intermission from the last meeting that was here. We wanted to wait for all the chairs to cool off.[23.68][23.68](laughter) I'm happy to see some of the same faces still here that were in attendance for the last meeting. We are not, I understand, going to approve the minutes of the December meeting today. That'll be continued to our next meeting at the end of the month. So we'll go immediately to continuance requests, Aubrey.
There are seven continuance requests. The first item is uncontested requests. Item B-42 for SPUD 473 to be deferred to January 29th. Item B-43, PV 091 deferred to February 26th. Item B-44, PV 092 deferred to February 26th. Item B-45, PC 10383 deferred to February 12th. Item B-46, SPUD 803 deferred to February 26th. Item B-47, PUD 1566 has been withdrawn. Item B-48, PC 10395 also withdrawn.
And I did forget a housekeeping matter, since I'm out of practice. We haven't done this since last year. If you have pagers or cellphones, if you would turn those off or silence them, we would appreciate that. And did anyone come to talk to us today about the items just read 42 through 48 on our agenda?
Over the uncontested continuance.
We have a motion and a second to approve the continuance request. Cast your votes. And that's approved.
There are 16 new requests for continuance. I'm going to read them all off. Item B-9, SPUD 796 deferred to February 26th. Item B-15, PUD 1568 deferred to January 29th. Item B-19, C-6691 deferred to January 29th. Item B-22, C-6679 deferred to February 12th. Item B-24, SPUD 802 to defer to February 12th. Item B-26, PUD 1567 deferred to February 12th. Item B-27, PUD 1569 deferred to February 12th. Item B-33, C-6697 deferred to January 29th. Item B-34, C-6659 deferred to February 26th. Item B-35, C-6598 deferred to February 26th. Item B-36, C-6685 deferred to January 29th. Item B-37, C-6667 deferred to February 26th. Item B-38, CE 898 deferred to January 29th. Item B-39, C-6693 deferred to January 29th. Item B-40, C-6694 deferred to February 12th. And last, B-41, C-6678 to defer to March 26th.
Sir.
Chairman Yocel, I'm here for the applicant on SPUD 801, which is Agenda Item 23, and we would like to pass that to the January 29th meeting if that's acceptable.
Okay, and give us your name for the record.
Steve McHale with Dairy Berry &amp; Navy.
Okay. That's Item 23?
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone here today who came to talk to us on Item 23? Okay, we'll add Item 23, Aubrey, to the continuous request. Anyone else come to talk to us on any of the items?
Good afternoon. Kendall Dillon with Crafton Toll, and we are representing the applicant on item number 36. It's a final plat of the Northwood Village, Section 1. And originally, we had a few TEs, and we surrendered a new preliminary or a new final plat a couple of weeks ago. However, we forgot and we did not have adequate communication with staff. I think now we have those things worked out, so if you all are willing, we'd like to have that item heard today.
Pardon? You'll have to follow along if we hear it.[296.12][296.12](laughter) Okay. Any comment or thought? Okay, we'll hear that one in order.
Thank you.
JJ?
Mr. Box stepped out, but I believe he wanted to change the continuance date on Item 24, SPUD 802, to January 29th rather than February 12th.
Okay. Did you get that? Todd, would you pass that to Bob? Thank you. Anyone else come to talk to us on any of the other items that were read by Aubrey a moment ago?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hear from the applicant on number 9. We have a letter asking for a continuance to address additional matters. You'll recall, this is the item that, at our last meeting, parcel that excludes the sign area up on Memorial Road suggested the, an easy fix was just to include it. Well, that's, over a month has passed since then, and now we're getting another request, and I'd like for Mr. Johnson to address the need and what we're trying to accomplish. Tim?
Good afternoon. Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates, representing the applicant today. Yes, Mr. Gels is correct. We're actually requesting six weeks' continuance on this, partially because we are going to include the parcel that was removed from the previous SPUD application. And in order to do that, we need to send new notification out, and so we wanted to have time to work on revised language in the SPUD, to submit it to staff, to get new notification out. And unfortunately, we couldn't get that done during the holiday season because there was too many people gone that was associated with this.
This is a sign that was originally going to go away when this application came in, is that correct?
That is correct.
What's changed?
The developer would like to include all the property in the application and discuss the use of that sign and possibly modification of that sign of some sort as part of the application.
Well, I guess maybe what's bothering me is that when we dealt with this a year or more ago, I thought we had a clear understanding that when you came back to develop this parcel, that sign was going to go away.
Those were technical evaluation notes that were agreed to in the final plat that came before you regarding that. At this point in time, the development has changed. There's a new proposed four-story hotel on this tract, and they want some consideration with regard to that. So we're going to write some language to submit to the staff.
Nick?
Mr. Chairman, you know, I frankly don't care if we continue this item today or not. Obviously, this sign has been an issue from the day that we approved the PUD that didn't allow it. Through a protracted order of adjustment proceeding where variances were requested, withdrawn, appeals of rulings were made, and finally, this sign was allowed to stay on, under that. A year ago, we did, with the approval of the client, approve the final plat as an accommodation, frankly, to allow the Hangar Clinic to proceed. When we first received this application in its present form, I first made an inquiry of staff, and I found out that this application was originally filed with staff to include that parcel. And then, before it got to us, it was carved out. It was rented and carved out. At that point, I called Mr. Johnson, and I inquired of him. I said, "What's the deal?" You know, we, when we did the plat, we agreed the sign would go at the development of this next parcel. Mr. Johnson commented to me at that time was, "Well, that was the intent, but my client," and at that point, I was probably rude, I just, I just cut him off. I, I didn't want to hear it. Yes, the sign's an issue, but I believe a bigger issue in this application is the process. This applicant has demonstrated over a period of years for absolute no regard for the process. When they bought this property, they either knew or certainly should have known that that sign was not permitted. When it became apparent to them, when they were, their permit was revoked, they knew at that time. There's just a clear disregard for the process, and that bothers me frankly more than the sign. Again, I don't, I don't mind continuing this for six weeks. I frankly don't know what's going to change in six weeks. I suspect that we're going to get some flowery request that the signs stay and we'll just advertise our onsite things and related entity. But again, is this in good faith? I question whether this applicant is operating in good faith. And in that regard, I can't help but note that Mr. Johnson is about the third person to represent them on this matter. He keeps getting somebody else fresh meat, Will, and we've yet to hear anything definitive from the applicant.
Well, I guess my thought and caution would be that the integrity of the process here is important to us, and the integrity of the people who come before us, I think, should be paramount in their minds, because over time, situations like this do not reflect well on anyone involved. And I think there clearly was a deal made a year ago. It was as clear as it could be, and now it's an attempt to game it. And I just suggest upfront that that's not a good idea. And that's all I have to say on the matter. Janice, did you want to add something?
Oh, I was just going to say, as far as whether we continue it today or not, I'll be here in six weeks, and that's fine with me. I think Mr. Johnson is well able to count to five, whether or not his client can. I don't think that the outcome will be any different, but I also believe that there, you know, things change over time. Here is not enough time for this particular thing to have changed, I don't think, but if they want to make an attempt to fit within the agreement that they've made and come up with some sort of new plan for this property, I guess that's fine with me. I'll be here.
Well, I might add, this is a new plan. This is a separate SPUD, considerably different from the original PUD with other issues to address that I believe can certainly be addressed. I'm just questioning and trying to get it on the record that the process has been violated, and I haven't seen a lot of good faith effort on a part of this happen.
Okay, well, we've discussed number 9. Any other items to be discussed, or are you ready to cast your votes?
Move the additional continuances, including number 23, and changing 24 to January 29th.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the additional continuances. Cast your votes, and those are approved. Are there any continuance requests from the public today? We're off to the consent docket.
Consent docket has eight items. First item is to initiate an application to close a portion of Northeast 52nd Street and the platted streets and alleys around it located east of Martin Luther King and south of Remington Place. Item 2 is PC 10404 to rezone 18100 Hogback Road from C3 to AA. Item 3 is PC 10407 to rezone 4624 Southwest 23rd from I-1 and I-2 to I-2. Item 4 is C-6690, the final plat of Colony Point, Phase 6, located north of Northwest Expressway and east of Piedmont. Item 5 is C-6692, final plat of Santa Fe Crossings Industrial Park, located east of Santa Fe and south of Northeast 150th. Item 6 is C-6695, the revised final plat of West Point Parkway, Phase 9, located east of Mustang Road, south of Reno. Item 7 is ED 209 to dedicate a street and utility easement to the public on a property located east of May and south of Northwest 192nd. Item 8 is SN 082 to consider a resolution changing the name of a portion of South Shields Boulevard between Southwest 4th and the east-bound off-ramp of I-40 to South EK Gaylord Boulevard.
Did anyone come to address us on items 1 through 8 today, our consent docket? I'd point out something of interest. There are three final plats here today in the consent packet. Most, if not all, final plats probably should be in the consent docket. I mean, why do they come in not complete when they're filed as final plats? I mean, in certain circumstances, it'll happen, but it would sure save you and us time.
That's right, Mr. Chairman. I agree. And one of the things I always look for when I'm reviewing final plat, staff's comment that this final plat is conformity with the zoning and the sub-rig.
Right.
Okay? The problem I have with that statement is we also see many final plats with many carryover technical evaluations from preliminary plat that haven't been cleaned up and should be.
That's my point.
That's why they hit the consent docket.
By the time they get to us as final plats, the preliminary plat TEs should have been dealt with.
That's correct. And then, yes, they should all be on the, frankly, they should, at that stage, they should all pretty much be on it. But I, you know, for the engineering community out there, the plea is, go ahead and clean them up before you let it get to the final plat stage. Don't let all those preliminary TEs carry over.
Well, that said, I need a vote on the consent docket.
Move approval of the items on the consent docket.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Cast your votes. It's approved. Nick, you're voting no over there? Okay. Didn't like it. Didn't matter. Still 8 to 1.
Under items requiring separate vote, the first item, item 9, was continued. Item 10 is SPUD 797 to rezone 3500 North Sooner Road from SPUD 531 and SPUD 703 to SPUD 797.
Mr. Chairman, Dennis Box. Keith Gibson and I are here on behalf of the applicant. Gary Blankenship has flown in from Houston, if you all have any questions. But if you recall, this is, an application was approved several years ago. There's an existing plant on the property. This is going to allow for a bigger expansion. It'll take the methane gas. It'll also take methane out of natural gas, and it will allow the prototype to expand. It's an example of a success story where we're taking a landfill, and many landfills that you see flare their gas. Well, this gas will be, has been used and will be used in a better capacity with the new plan. So we're here to answer any questions. We're excited about this facility. There'll be several others built around the country. There are four large companies that are part of this joint venture, and if you have any questions, we're here to respond.
And the TEs, you're agreeing with all those?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we do have someone signed up. Jeffrey Goldsmith.
Can I ask a question before he comes up? There's a notation that detention is not required at this time in the event of future flooding of structures downstream, detention will be required. That's something that I don't remember having seen before. It seems odd, and I wonder if, what the basis of that is. I mean, is there, is it anticipated that there will be flood problems, or?
No, and as indicated, what we're doing is, we'll add another building. We'll have some additional processing capacity, so it will expand, but we have had no problems on this site with the existing facility. So I'm guessing that's standard language, it's just a report.
Okay.
Mr. Box, let me ask you a question. I know you have space for additional buildings. What about storage facilities? Are there additional tanks that need to be added?
There is, and the site plan that you see in front of you shows the additional tanks that will be put on. Also, under the presence facility, we only have one roadway end which went to the south. Now, we're going to have the roadway that you see to the north, so that will make the facility safer and better. But what you see is what we plan on building.
I have a comment, Mr. Chairman. I noticed that in the TEs, it's talking about the signage, but there's no reference that you will have or you not have EMD signs. Are you going to have a flashing sign on this particular piece of property?
Against my desire, the client said they didn't want one.
Pardon me?
Against my desire, the client said they didn't want one.
They don't want one?
That's correct.
Would you add that to the TEs?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, is Jeffrey Goldsmith here? Apparently not.
Mr. Chairman, generally, would be opposed to landfill expansion. In this particular instance, I think it works to our environmental betterment, so thank you for going green.
Is that a motion?
I would like to move that we accept.
Okay.
Item 10.
With the addition on the TE, there are no EMD signs.
With addition, yes.
And, okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 10 as condition, no EMD signs. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Item 11 is SPUD 798 to rezone 4901 Southeastern from I-2 to SPUD 798.
Yes, my name is Jim Urie, and I'm the applicant.
Okay.
My name is Tim Sejat.
Well, as I understand your application, you want to put in a mobile home park?
RV park.
RV park, okay. And you own land to the west which would screen the residential areas?
Yes.
From, and do you intend to do something with that land? Is there some reason it's not included in this PUD?
Well, it can be an expansion of this RV park in years to come if it fits in line to what we can and cannot do.
Okay, commissioners?
I do have a comment. In the aerial photograph that's in the packet, it appears that this is completely covered by trees.
It is completely forested at this time.
Forested thing. And in your application, you have committed to preserving as many of those trees as you can?
Yes.
And so if any one of us drives by the RV park and sees a clear-cutted facility with a bunch of RVs with a, you know, post in there?
That will probably be done.
It would be a shame to waste the resource. So, I mean, you say you're going to do that, so I trust that you are going to do that.
I am.
And I hope that you make it a nice wooded RV park and...
I want it to be a park.
Okay.
I really don't want just side-by-side RV pads.
That's what I, we don't want to see that.
I want them on angles. I want them higher, lower trees. I want it to truly be a park.
All right, with that commitment, I'm of approval of the application.
I wanted to ask a question about signs first.
Go ahead.
And I like that you're not having EMD signs and no pole signs and all that, but it just says, "All freestanding signs within the SPUD shall be ground monument signs," which is a good thing. I'd like to know how many of them there will be.
Honestly, I don't know that I can answer that, but I would think only one.
I like that answer.
It's just at the entrance.
Okay. So can we say it'll be only one?
I would think so.
Okay.
And the conceptual plan that we're looking at, that's in our packet that you obviously submitted with your application, is that what you intend to do?
Yes. Now, it will be varied by the tree, as we spoke. If I have a tree that is in a spot that really is nice, we'll move a pad over a little bit. But the nice trees are what we want to keep.
Okay.
Commissioners, no one has signed up. Do we have a, some kind of ordinance or whatever? And maybe, JJ, you may have to answer this, on what kind of streets are allowed in this kind of a development?
Yes, there's a whole section of the code on RV parks and trailer parks and mobile home parks, and it will have to be paved.
Okay, when you say paved, what do you mean?
It would have to be, if it's a one-way drive, it would have to be a certain width. I don't know what those are.
It has to be hard surface?
Yes, it does have to be.
And it has to be, the gutters or the trenches have to be approved by the city?
There is.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioners, discussion, motion?
I made the motion, but to add to the motion, the one sign at the entrance, eight-foot monument sign, you agree to that?
I do.
Okay, then that's the motion, so it needs a second.
Second a motion.
We have a motion and a second as condition. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12 is SPUD 799 to rezone 3007 Southwest 59th from C3 to SPUD 799.
Good afternoon. Mark Grubbs, on behalf of the applicant. What we have for you is a single-use PUD to allow for many storage. We agree to all the TEs. Be happy to answer any questions. Just ask for your approval.
Are we going to see brick-facing Southwest 59th Street? Is that what the building is going to look like? What are we going to have?
Say that again. I didn't hear you.
What is going to be the building surface facing Southwest 59th Street? Is that going to be brick and what?
It's going to be, it's going to be a mixture of like what you're seeing up there on the screen or your exhibits. It's a mixture of stucco and brick columns to give it an architectural accent.
Okay.
So, just, sorry, Janice. On the sides facing the apartment complexes, right? So we're going to, we're going to have the site-proof screening, and you're going to have the landscape buffer, right?
We requested that the landscape buffer be removed, put the site-proof fence on, and, and just asking that that landscape buffer be removed because trees inside the facility are, we have building up against the property along the east half of it, and then we have detention facility on the west half of it shown. I mean, if we, if we had to put trees on the, on the detention, at the detention pond, that's, you know, it's not a deal killer to me.
Well, it just seemed to me that we weren't taking, we weren't taking enough consideration of an existing group of residential properties, which I, I found, I wasn't in favor of that. That's your point.
I've walked the property a lot, and I've been, you know, adjacent to those apartments. I think it'll be a very nice addition to the area.
I guess I have the same concerns and questions. If, if what we're using as screening instead of a wall or trees is, we're using the buildings as screening, and this is what they're going to be looking at?
Are we talking about 59th or the apartments?
The apartments. Although 59th is some concern to me as well, but the apartments specifically. And I feel like there needs to be screening between the mini-storage buildings, which are just not terribly attractive. I mean...
The apartments are not, there's no doors facing the apartments. Oh, there'd be site-proof screening, okay, there's the building, I'm adding it on the east half, which will be site-proof screening. And then, on the west half, we're agreeing to site-proof screening as well, so you won't see the doors.
But no landscaping, right?
I'll agree to, I'll agree to landscaping inside the fence.
Mark, what's your, what's your site-proof screening? Let's talk about that first.
We, we have, we, it hasn't been definitive yet, but we've discussed making it stucco as well, something, a little bit. I mean, stockade, stockade fence is not very secure. to many storage.
And that's the problem, that the minimum at the code level is a six-foot stockade fence. That's quote, "site-proof screening."
We've asked for eight foot.
That is certainly not adequate for here. That's all I'm saying. And the application was silent on that. It's pretty much silent on, on landscaping, and I also had concerns with this long frontage on 59th Street, driving by and just seeing a bunch of garage doors, basically. Well, yeah, through a...
Well, we'll have trees, we'll have the, the streetscape on that side, on 59th.
I see none of that here, Mark. That's what I'm saying. I see no comment.
The streetscape of your 20-foot minimum spacing of trees on the streetscape.
And I see nothing in here about talking about...
Well, we can amend it to say that.
Mini-storage standards and kind of how you...
Yeah, no, they do that.
Well, they say they were going to comply with them, but they didn't give any detail.
Right. Okay, so, to be clear, just so we can, we've had a lot of talk. I want to know what, what, what you're proposing. One is, I know what, at least this end of the, of the first few ones, and that's, we want landscaping with respect on the side that abuts the apartment, okay? That's one. Then, obviously, we want the landscaping on the street side. Also, I understand you're going to put up an eight-foot fence with some sort of opaque screen material on it, right?
So, the only people, yeah, but that's, that's my point on the landscaping, is that it's, the landscaping ends up being inside the fence, right?
Yep.
So, the only people that are seeing it with an eight-foot fence are the people that go to the mini-storage. And if that's what you want, I'm not going to let that, you know, get in the way, but it's just, to me, it's, nobody that's going to their mini-storage cares whether they see the trees or not.
Me personally, I'm, I'm more concerned about the site-proof screening than I am about the landscaping, although, you know, you could always put the landscaping on the other side of the fence, but I understand that that might create some maintenance difficulties for you, so, to me, it's the site-proof screening that's more important.
Well, the site-proof screening, we, we don't want a stockade fence, so it's, we've talked about continuing the, the metal facade and putting stucco on it, which would be a nice appearance for, for them, but I think that, I mean, we're putting rod iron out front, it's, I think it's going to be a nice-looking facility. It's not, we're not going to do stockade fences there.
I have another comment. In addition to landscaping, site-proof screening, are there sidewalks proposed along Southwest 59th Street?
Yes, we, either, either we have to do the five-foot offset off the curb or the six-foot on the curb.
And is that in, maybe I missed it. Is that in the application?
Yeah, yes, we agreed to that.
All right. So, the landscaping on the 59th Street side would be on the other side of the black fence? Or between the fence and the sidewalk?
Yeah, one of the two, one of the two. I mean, I prefer the trees to be on the outside of the fence. I think it, it's a little bit more appealing.
I think so, too. Yeah, okay.
But as, as, as right now, we, I've discussed with the client that just putting a sidewalk on the street, a little bit easier to do the irrigation that way.
We also have, you know, in the new plan about the approval for street trees, and that's between the street and the sidewalk, that, that section in there.
That would be your streetscape, your street, that would be your streetscape trees, yes, in the landscape.
Between the curb and the new sidewalk, if you have to do a sidewalk that's five feet interior, right? So, whichever option, I would, I think that, you know, the street trees are probably more appropriate and better for a neighborhood, but whatever, you've got to do the landscaping and the sidewalks as well, so wherever those are positioned, I'm, I'm okay with that. Okay. To Mike and Janice's comment earlier, you notice what they're wanting to do is waive the required setback and build to the property line, so that goes to your concern?
Well, the property, I mean, right now, it's zone C-3. It allows for the use. The only reason you're bringing this before you is, is essentially to allow to put those buildings on that line. Otherwise, you'd just build at C-3 and move on.
Well, but you'd have to screen between the C-3 and the residential, see? So, you'd be giving up a lot of property, but I'd get trees.
The screening is, is five, the, the screening's five feet.
I mean, I'd have the landscape buffer there if you, even if you built it at C-3.
A five-foot, a five-foot landscape buffer, you're correct.
Yeah, I'd get some.
I understand, and you could pull the building back five feet and you could, and then you could put the trees right behind it.
Yeah.
But I think it'll be a very nice facility, and we'll, we'll agree to where that building's not on the line, we'll put trees on the inside of the fence if that's, I don't have a problem in doing that.
All right, thanks.
Any further discussion? Somebody want to make a motion that incorporates your thoughts? I can't make the motion.
Okay, so, we'll move approval to the application. One, eight-foot fence, site-proof screening, where able, you'll put trees inside the fence where the building lines line up.
Adjacent to the residential.
Adjacent to the residential, right?
Yes, sir.
Can I leave anything out? And the rest of the TE, Mark, you're okay with them?
I agree to them. Yeah, one of them was the chain link fence, and then the other was the, we were asking for two more feet on the sign, same amount of square footage, but it's not, I mean, I thought it was, everybody, yeah, it's fine, we'll agree to it.
Can we add a little bit of specificity to the site-proof screening?
So, opaque, the TE, opaque buffer screening?
So, what I heard Mark say is that would probably wind up being stucco, which will match the...
Right.
Say it again. I'm hard to hear.
What?
You made mention earlier of maybe the site-proof fence would be stucco and not stockade, so that we get something that's more permanent?
Yes, yes. And a stockade fence doesn't provide much security for many stores, so...
No, and they fall down, too. They fall apart and they rot and fall down.
So, it'll add stucco fence, right?
We can, we can remove stockade.
Right.
How about that?
Okay.
So, that gives us a little bit of flexibility.
Okay.
Pardon me.
All right, so that's a motion. Will you have a second?
Second.
Okay, cast your votes. And it is approved.
Item 13 is S.P.U.D. 800 to rezone 1725 Northwest 16th from N.B. and U.D. to S.P. 800. S.P.U.D. 800.
Mr. Chairman, Richard Riggs, I'm appearing on behalf of the applicant, Lyric Theater of Oklahoma. This application has only one purpose, actually, and that is to permit, on a very limited basis, the sale of alcoholic beverages at Lyric Plaza Theater on 16th Street. As you're aware from attending live performances at the Civic Center and elsewhere, patrons are often given the opportunity to purchase drinks, including alcoholic drinks, before performances and during intermission, and Lyric would like to have the opportunity to provide its patrons at the Plaza Theater that same opportunity, and that's the purpose for this S.P.U.D. application. I wanted to particularly point out one provision in the design statement for your consideration. That's the paragraph that immediately follows the list of permitted uses, and it points out that what is being permitted here, or proposed, and if approved, permitted, would be a very limited sale of alcoholic beverages and only sales that are incidental to performances and other events at the theater. There is no request here, and this does not contemplate authorization to open a bar or tavern or anything broader than this limited incidental usage. This site is currently zoned neighborhood business, and no other changes in the applicable requirements are being contemplated or requested. It's only this use issue. I have discussed with the staff one minor issue with the design statement. There's a statement that no buildings will be configured so that the rear of a building faces the street. In fact, the current design of the theater, as you'll see from the site plan, the back of Lyric Theater does back up to Gatewood, and we just want to clarify that, that that, we're not going to run afoul of this limitation based on the current design. We, we understand the staff is supportive of that, that suggestion. We also understand that the Plaza District Association is supportive of our application in this regard. We have other representatives of Lyric here today, including Executive Director Paula Stover, and we'd be pleased to answer any questions and appreciate your consideration.
Mr. Riggs, I have two.
Yes.
You say that these alcohol sales will be incidental to the performances.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, we'd like that language as a technical evaluation. And my other question is, if I look at the Civic Center, for example, and where they sell alcoholic beverages before performances and at intermission, there's a lobby area separate from the performance area, and alcohol does not go into the performance areas, so they don't have an overlay that covers the entire theater, but they have it with respect to the area where the drinks are sold and consumed. Is that something that you would consider?
I mean... Yes, I believe so. That, the, the area where the beverages are sold is the lobby area.
Well, that's what I would assume.
Yes, right.
Nick, did you want to say something?
Real quick, yes, the one was what, what you were talking about, John, I don't know that the overlay needs to be on the entire theater.
Right.
But the other thing, the restrictive wording in the staff report that Riggs referred to appears to leave open the other periodic events conducted at the property. So, I'm envisioning Lyric getting bold here, the lyric I know, and, you know, renting that thing out to big, bad Bob Bright's boogie house some weekend when there's not a play, and, and it's a wide-open honky-tonk, if you will. So, if that TE you referred to could be refined somewhat, you know, I don't think that's where you're going. You don't want to rent out to other commercial people, but this would leave it open for that.
I can see them doing a patron event or a fan-based event for their...
But that's, that's tied to Lyric.
Right.
This, and one of the problems we have with ABCs is they, they go to perpetuity. So, if somebody else comes in after Lyric, we have a little bit of a problem. The other thing I'll, I'll say is you're putting this in a, in an S.P.U.D. and, and basically rezoning. It's a theater, okay? The old Plaza Theater that I spent many, many Saturday mornings in as a child, where's the multifamily residential going to be? Where are the convenience salesperson, well, that could maybe the research facilities? We have a plethora of uses listed here that really appear to be that this is, this site's what it is. It's a theater. It could be, those uses could be pared down to what you, what you really are and what you really need, as opposed to this long list, and I'm, I'm suspect you, these managed to get in the application because they're mirroring the zoning along 16th Street.
That's, that's exactly correct. It mirrors the permitted uses under the, that are currently permitted under the N.B. zoning, and we would certainly have no problem in trying to pare that down to limited, keeping in mind the fact, as you point out, that these are, these do go on forever, and we would need to contemplate some potential change, but we, that's certainly not in the works, and it's, it's going to be a theater, as you say.
Well, and the day it's not a theater, then perhaps it wouldn't be appropriate to come back and, and readdress the issue and rezonate at that time.
What I'm, what I'm going to suggest is that we not try and identify which ones to strike and which ones to keep now, but continue this for two weeks. If you would meet with our staff, just look at what uses really do relate to what you want to do, because it is going to be a theater for a long time. You've made a major investment in the venue.
Absolutely.
It's very active as a theater, productions are, of great quality are done there all the time, so I think it would...
I think everybody here likes what you're trying to do and wants to help you get there, but we are burdened by the fact that the zoning is forever, and, you know, there, there are other uses that will be incidental, like, you know, a retail sales component. You'll want to have a gift shop, that kind of thing, that can be included, but I don't think you're going to be doing any dog grooming on site, or, you know, running a laundry, or any of these, this, you know, huge list of uses, so I'm all in favor of that idea. Let's just take two weeks and...
Well, that also would afford you the opportunity to refine this other language just the way you want it, as opposed to trying to do it today.
Absolutely. The staff's been very helpful in this process, and we'd be pleased to work with them.
And as far as dog grooming is concerned, Janice?
I'm sorry?
As far as the dog grooming is concerned, just as an aside, many years ago, the space immediately to the east of that was a, a shoe repair shop run by a gentleman named Bynum. He also had pigeons in his shoe repair shop.
I remember that, you did.
Pigeons?
He raised homing pigeons at, at the shop. So, maybe animals, not too far-fetched for that site.
Again, to repeat, you know, I really do support what the Lyric Theater is doing and what you've done for that particular district, the Plaza District, have revitalized it, et cetera, and I think with these revisions, you're home and home, without any question at all. So, work with the staff and just delete, as you said, animal care, et cetera, and, and the refining of the, of the, of the alcohol use and where that's going to be, I'm with you all the way. Move to continue it for two weeks, is that right? Need a second?
We have a motion and a second to continue item thirteen, excuse me, item 13 for two
weeks. Cast your votes. We will see you in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 14, S.P.U.D. 804 to rezone 11500 Broadway Extension from P.U.D. 1342 to S.P.U.D. 804.
Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates, representing the applicant, hopefully on a lighter note. This original P.U.D. 1342 apparently didn't contemplate a small tract of land like is being proposed here for a small heart hospital. It had some extraordinary setbacks in the P.U.D., 50-foot from the north and east line, so basically rendered that tract undevelopable. So, this P.U.D. basically repeats the language that was in the original P.U.D. and takes away those extraordinary setbacks on the north and east. We're going to respect the platted setbacks on the south and west, and as you have read in the P.U.D. or S.P.U.D., that we're respecting all the landscape corridor, other issues that were already addressed in the original P.U.D. I'd be happy to answer any questions. There are no technical evaluations.
Yes, I have, I have a question, and this might be directed towards the staff. I know that this particular building is only two stories.
Correct.
And the building adjacent to it, I believe, is three stories. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And does this meet the guidelines of an appearance corridor for, for, JJ, is there any concern with that?
Now, the building, the building meets our standard 70 percent, 70/30 brick ephes, and then he'll meet all the landscape requirements, so I don't see anything...
What about the exterior design of the building, and what materials are used in that?
Well, as JJ mentioned, the S.P.U.D. mimicked the original pod and requires a 70 percent brick and masonry finish. There are other architectural languages that are in the P.U.D. There are other architectural languages that are in the PUD with regard to architectural metals and things like that, but it'll generally be a brick and stone building.
Landscape points are increased by twenty percent.
That's correct, and we do, that's included.
No one signed up? No one signed up? Move for adoption?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item fourteen. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
And it's approved.
Item fifteen was continued. Item sixteen, ABC eight twenty-four, for an ABC three overlay to the DTD two transitional district located at eight one four West Sheridan Avenue.
Good afternoon, Jose Rodriguez. I'm Cohen of Flashback Retro Prep, who's applying for ABC three.
Okay, Commissioners, again, no one has signed up. Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item sixteen. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Item seventeen, ABC eight twenty-five, for an ABC two overlay to the C three district located at sixty-seven zero five North Bay.
Hello, thank you.
You are?
My name is Paul Wilson. My son and I have Falcones.
And you're adding, or seeking to add, ABC two to a restaurant, existing restaurant, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I initially had some concerns about this, because if you're familiar with this site at all, it's a little tiny postage stamp. But we visited about the parking, and they have an agreement that the building is actually owned by the same person that owns the building, the strip center to the north, and they have cross-access agreements with them. And they're also on very good terms with the church, which is not all that common, I don't think. It butts right up against them. So there's a parking lot also on the south side of the building that's vacant most of the time. And so that alleviated my concerns about that. The building itself is just too small to be much of a bar. I mean, you know, they're going to be able to offer wine and beer and, you know, maybe the occasional cocktail to their guests, but it's not, you know, it's going to remain what it is, I think, and add a little bit of beverage service. So I'm comfortable with that after visiting with the applicant about it.
Did you try the pizza?
I have tried the pizza, although not recently.
I was going to say, try the pizza and the calzone, and then et cetera, et cetera.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We have access to fifty-eight parking spots, and we have forty-two seats in the restaurant.
So if anyone signed up to speak on this matter? If not, then I'll move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item seventeen. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Item eighteen is C sixty-six eighty-six, the preliminary plat of Mirfield Village Three, located south of Northwest one hundred and sixty-fourth and west of May.
Good afternoon. Ernie Ish representing the applicant, and Mr. Roberts is here also. We agree with the technical evaluations. In fact, item number two, traffic has now cleared our site distance. And TE number four, we have provided the common area access, so we believe we're in compliance and ask for your approval.
Mr. Chairman, I'll note the staff comment, sign consistent with the preliminary plat in accordance with the sub-rig. This is a preliminary plat, not a final, but I'll move approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve item eighteen. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you very much.
Item nineteen was continued. Item twenty, C sixty-six ninety-six, the final plat of Lisbon Lofts, located at the northwest corner of Northwest Ninth and Chartel.
My name is George Marquez, and I'm with Craft and Toll, representing the applicant. We are in agreement with all of the TEs in the staff report. TE number three is a request for variance for a site triangle. The property is currently platted with no site triangle, and the developer has a building permit, and the units are currently under construction. So we cannot provide a site triangle due to the unit located on the southeast corner being in conflict with the site triangle. We don't believe there's a traffic hazard present, and we request that the plat be approved at this time.
So you got started before you cleared the site triangle, did you?
Well, this is a replant, so, you know, it was under the old blocks. There's currently four, I think, plots, one through four, under the original plat. So we're replanting to convert that into seven lots.
Okay. Purpose of explaining what TE four means, could you explain, JJ, what the site triangle issue is with this application or was? What is, what are you looking, what's the, what are you looking for?
Site triangle is a twenty-five-foot triangle chopped at the corner of the intersection, basically to keep things out of view of obstruction.
Is it twenty-five feet?
From the corner of the property, twenty-five feet each way, and you connect those dots, and that's your triangle. In the downtown area, we're really not that concerned with site triangles. In fact, there's a provision in the code to waive those through the zoning ordinance, but that has no effect on the subdivision regulations that also require the site triangle. So that's the need for the variance.
But is it, I guess that's my question. Is it different downtown for this?
Definitely.
Development is going to happen?
Yes, definitely.
Than it would be up, you know, on one hundred and twenty-second Street in a subdivision?
Much different, yeah.
But are the subdivision regulations appropriate for both? Or do they, do the regulations currently drafted only have one site triangle provision in them? Do they identify downtown versus...
No, the zoning ordinance does, but the subdivision regulations don't.
The subdivision...
The zoning ordinance does have a provision to waive site triangles in the downtown area. The subdivision regulations don't, do not, and that's the reason for the variance.
Or does it matter?
I just wanted to see if Mr. Baker was awake, so I raised the issue. We have a variance that we need to address. Move the variance, TE three. Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the variance to TE three. Cast your votes. That's approved. Move to the application. Second. And we have a motion and a second to approve the item. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item twenty-one, DA twenty-four two three zero, for consideration of a lot split deed approval on a property located at thirteen five forty-five and thirteen five forty-seven Borgata Lane.
Good afternoon. Kendall Dawn with Craft and Toll, representing the applicant, and this is a lot split application. It's before you all, because we're attempting to deed a sliver of common area to a lot. Therefore, it has to come to planning commission. You'll notice that we did one identical to it on Lot sixteen. We'd like to do it on Lot twelve. These are a couple of premium lots that look right down the lake. They're wanting to build a couple of bigger houses on them. It will not affect the access to the common area. It's currently twenty feet, even as a net result of this. It's twenty feet at the street and still a resulting length of forty feet at the back. So there's more than ample. In fact, I think we've already got access in there and some amenities to the south. The application is from the developer, so with that, we'd ask for your approval.
No one has signed up, Commissioners?
Kendall, this will be the last time we see one of these in this little tiny...
It should be.
Okay. Move approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve item twenty-one, which is a variance. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Items twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four were continued. Item twenty-five, SPUD eight zero five, to rezone twenty-one forty Southwest Forty-fourth from C three to SPUD eight zero five.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you are here helping people. This is my place. This is the only place I've got, and we are selling used merchandise, and we like to sell few cars, too. And I'm planning to improve the property, put in good sign, and put in concrete or asphalt or anything that's necessary, and take care of the land. And that's a big land, and it doesn't bother anybody, any business. There is no business around me, and I do believe everybody around my business is happy with that. If you have any question, I would be more than happy.
Here's my comment on this application, and it really is a question to the Commissioners. When is the last time that you saw a used car lot application come in with some landscaping, signage that's appropriate, architecture, et cetera? And in other words, I think the application is well-done, and for a used car lot is surprisingly compatible with what it is in the neighborhood, even though the staff says that it introduces outdoor display. If you look on the aerial map, there's nothing around it. It's, you know, we're dealing with a creek and then Southwest Forty-fourth Street, shopping center, something across the street. I mean, it's like it's isolated in there, and you're going to have some trees and bushes and a nice little building and an eight-foot sign. So with that, I move approval of the application.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to approve item twenty-five. Cast your votes. That's approved.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Items twenty-six and twenty-seven are continued. Item twenty-eight, SPUD seven ninety-four, to rezone one hundred Northwest one hundred and fourteen, from R one and I two to SPUD seven ninety-four.
My name's Charlie Allen, Allen Engineering. Dr. Robin Bayless is here, the owner of the property. This is kind of an exciting project for us. It's a multi-use event center at one hundred and nineteenth, one hundred and fourteenth and Broadway Extension. Agreed with most of the staff comments, except in number, item two, the couple of uses that we'd like to have remaining. Two in particular, the spectator sports and entertainment. We need those two actually for this business. There is one accessory, non-accessory sign already on the site, one billboard. It's about forty feet in height. We, I suppose, we'd need to amend that so that that billboard can remain. With that, I'd like to, I think there's one person maybe that signed up in protest. Answer any questions.
We do have protests, but I have a couple of questions. You're contemplating some outdoor entertainment venue in a portion of the parking lot, is that correct? I'd be concerned about lightings, particularly for night programs. I assume some of these would occur in the evening and...
Correct.
Not during the daytime. And I want some assurance that the lighting will be directed away from the Broadway Extension and from the people to the west, and that it be down...
Yes, I mean, that's one of the reasons the outdoor stage is at the, on the west side of the building, is so it's not really visible from Broadway Extension, and then all the lighting would be directed in towards the site.
But you've also got another business behind you...
Correct.
...that I think needs to be respected as well. You say there's a billboard on the site now?
Yes.
Okay, I missed that one that went by, I guess. I was looking down and not up.
Yeah, we're kind of sitting down a little hole there.
I'm sorry?
We're sitting down low in the hole there, kind of.
Right. And how large is the message board portion of this sign that you've got?
I believe it's about seven and a half feet by a little over thirteen feet. We feel that, you know, the message board and advertising for this type of business is very important to the success of it, so we've kind of asked for the largest and biggest we can go, so...
I'd be, my question really goes to how large and active the sign is when I think of the two together, because the road kind of curves somewhere right near your site.
Right, right.
And if that's a real elaborate animated sign, which is what I would think you'd want to draw people to, let's say...
Correct.
...the evening event, it's also going to be very distracting from Broadway Extension, which gets a lot of crazy drivers now, because I'm north and south on that every day, and clinging to my steering wheel part of the time. So I'd be curious as to how we might control the activity on that sign. Nick, you have something?
Yeah, I have several comments. I'm troubled by this application for several reasons. One, the number of uses, and you've addressed those. I think that this appears to be, for the most part, a single-use PUD, so I think you should be able to pare those uses down to three or four best. You're asking for an ABC over the entire thing. The only limitation on the ABC is that it's to be conjunction with entertainment. Well, I can tell you, a lot of people would argue that any drinking is entertaining. So, you know, it, one of the renderings shows an indoor basketball court, so I'm assuming there's going to be basketball games.
Correct.
I'm assuming there will be youth basketball game there. Typically, when we see a sports complex like this, we limit the ABC to when the kids aren't there, things like that. This is an appearance corridor. You come, as John said, come around the curve on... The application gives some rough renderings, but no real specific plan or anything. I think it's...
We'd be happy to add in a specific plan.
Well, I just think you're a little premature. I think if you would continue this, go back, address, cut the uses, address how you can limit the ABC, address the signage. We already have a billboard there that I'm certain is probably under some type of a long-term lease. But now we want another big competing sign with it. That is problematic with the two of them there. Appearance may be fine, I don't know. I can't tell from my staff report, but this is really a highly visible area, not only because of the traffic on Broadway, but as John pointed out, you do have other businesses one right behind you. So my recommendation would be take some of those thoughts and tweak this, bring it back to us.
I think also there is a concern which really goes to really working out a continuance in terms of how you'll access the property from the service road, that there might be a couple of better ways to access, actually access, from the service road into the property. And I think some of those things probably need to be worked out as well. We've talked a little bit about, you know, my concern of, you know, the twenty thousand square feet and how we could limit that ABC. So some additional thoughts. We've already discussed that, and you're willing to take out the bathrooms and kitchen, and let's look at what other areas, I think, can also be cut down. And then add, as Nick suggested, that whenever kids are present, that no alcohol will be served, and that would be my suggestion.
Would that also mean that, my concern for where the alcohol is served is, my, I'm sorry, my concern about limiting where the alcohol is served is I need it to be served on the, what looks like the basketball floor and the stadium seating right next to it, because my main income from this facility will be from renting it out for wedding receptions and so forth like that, quinceañeras, whatever. And that's where most of the people will be sitting, like, picture the basketball court covered with tables and so forth, where people will be sitting for the event. And that's what my concern was, wanting to have alcohol served just on that floor area and the seating area. I don't need it to be served anywhere else, and that would be about half of the square footage, I think, could be eliminated just right there.
Well, there may be a couple of ways to deal with that, one of which would be when you're using it for... One of which would be when you're using it for the design purpose of, you know, the basketball and so forth. You could limit the alcohol area to your cafe and public area or whatever. When you're having special events, those would be specifically, I mean, we know what special events are. So we could say special events like weddings, anniversary parties, certainly not high school proms. When you could serve alcohol throughout the venue then, as you would, for example, setting up tables on the basketball court. But make a distinction between the different kinds of activities and how you would treat them. We have three people who've signed up. And I think it might be beneficial if we hear each of them, at least briefly. So if you hear their concerns, there may be something that you would consider to address once we hear from them. So if you don't mind doing that, we'd like to-
Absolutely. Thank you for your time.
Okay, D W Converse?
If you don't mind, Commissioner, I might ask the-
I'm just taking them in order, so as I see them.
Randall Shaded, represent DeKalb Auctioneers, the property owner to the west. And if you've been by there, you've seen they have a nice facility there. We have several pro, or reasons to protest this application. I sent a letter to staff. I hope you got a copy of that with setting those items out. But briefly, this is a single-use application. And the single use is not compatible with your comprehensive plan for this area. And then there are industrial uses, or not industrial, but uses that they've included in their S P U D that we object to, and I set those out in the letter. We object to metal siding on the building. They've got a facade on the front, the Broadway side, metal on the other three sides. It should be masonry on all sides. This is the Broadway corridor and it's a special, special district. We object to the size of the sign and the electronic nature of the sign. And we object to non-accessory signs on this property. It almost looks like they're wanting to do just an electronic billboard sign on this property by the size of it. But we do object to the sign as accessory use and we object to any non-accessory signs. There is noted, I don't know whether changes have been made since this was filed, but it was noted in the packet that they are using a drive on the south side of the access road. They do not have access to that drive. That is a private driveway that my client built and maintains. And we will not grant access to that driveway. This is also in a severe drainage area. Mr. Converse is here to talk about that. But there is a drainage study that's required by staff. And that drainage study really needs to be done before any application's approved on this property. Because it is the low area. And there, if you drive, you notice there's a swell and the, the water flows right through this property from the quarter section, if not the entire section. We would request that all of the Broadway Extension corridor standards be complied with, signs be minimal. And the last thing I heard was an outdoor venue, entertainment venue on the west side of the building that immediately abuts my client's property in their parking lot. And I'm going to have to ask them if this is approved, whether they would request some type of screening between this facility, particularly if alcohol is going to be served. We vigorously object to any alcohol at this site. This is not an area where alcohol is served. This part of town, you've got a university across the street. So we would object to any alcohol, but particularly if those people are going to be then coming into our property after their concerts or whatever are over. So those are the finer points of our objection. Thank you for listening to this. Mr. Converse can talk about the drainage.
Commissioners, Chairman. I think Nick hit it. I think we need to, if you would, let them come and talk to us a little bit. We've got drains concerned. This is in a low area. This property hasn't developed for many years for a reason. It's got drainage coming from all over the place. My client, DeKalb Auctioneers, has done an extensive drainage study to the west to develop their property. I'm concerned when I see their site plan, there is nothing on that says where it's going to go. Historically, the state of Oklahoma has undersized their site drainage going out. So we're concerned about backing up and causing us problems on our property. So I think, like Commissioner Gale said, I think we, we ought to take, take back and have a chance to meet with them and say, how are you going to handle some of these issues? And discuss some of these other things and we'll go on with it. Okay?
Thank you. Mike LaBelle? Oh, no, that's the next case, I'm sorry. Those are the two, not three people. Sir Allen?
I suppose we can address some of the uses and narrow them down. I mean, we do want to leave some of the uses, obviously, in five years from now. If the entertainment business isn't successful, we need to fall back and be able to, to market the site as, as some other use. As far as, so we'll, I mean, we'll agree to come back in two weeks and, and restrict the uses. We'd like to address the drive to the frontage road there. We're actually out, that portion is out in the ODOT right-of-way. The portion that we're tying into is the concrete section that is out in the public right-of-way, ODOT right-of-way. We submitted our entrance to the city of Oklahoma City. They have approved that. And we have sent that on to ODOT for approval also, which probably in two weeks we'll have that. As far as the drainage, we'll have to deal with that with engineering. This is a land use issue that we're, we're trying to discuss today and not really get into the drainage issues. We do realize there are some drainage issues. And engineering will have to review it and approve it. So I guess with that, I'd like to ask for a continuance for two weeks or more.
Also, we, it may not be in the, the literature you guys got, but we've already agreed it's going to be a tilt-up concrete building with an arched metal roof. It'll be attractive and contemporary looking. And the very front of it will be nice rock and stone. And there won't be any metal building at all, except for the roof.
I have a question. Have you met with the neighbors to the west?
Yes, we have.
Yes, sir.
And you can't come to any agreement with them? About what you're going to do, particularly with the entertainment going on outdoors, which abuts their property? Like the man said, you know, anyway, well, if you're going to continue this, all I have to say is, is that I don't, I don't agree with Commissioner Gale's assessment that you can tweak this application. I think you need to do major surgery. Because, because the signage I will never vote for in a hundred years. Non-accessory signs, no. Building materials, access, ingress, drainage, all the uses that you think that you could use. This is a single-purpose thing. So that's my comment when you come back in in two weeks, is that I don't expect to see what I see today.
The non-accessory sign, you, you don't mean that we have to eliminate the billboard that's already there, do you?
Well, I can't do anything about that.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's in there. Or I suppose I could maybe. But, but, but you want, you want 50-foot signs all glowing, which is never going to be acceptable in an appearance corridor. And appearance corridor standards are well-known to applicants who read what it is that we want in an appearance corridor. And this flies in the face of everything that appearance corridor standards are. So therefore, rather than tweak, you need to do something really significantly different because I could never support this.
And I, I would have to echo that. The idea that you need all of these uses because this business may not pan out and therefore you need to fall back on, you know, all of this laundry list. That's not going to work in a situation where you are needing so much consideration, I guess, for the kind of use you're trying to- 20,000 square feet of, of alcohol services, that's a non-starter, I think. But, but you do have a situation where you need to be somewhat flexible about that. It's kind of a unique concept. There's going to have to be some give and take, I get that. But you're going to have to commit to it. I mean, there's not going to be, but then we still want all these I2 uses. When I look at this application, it seems to me that it is basically a commercial application. And it concerns me that the development regulations of I2 or what apply to its, its development. I, that just doesn't make any sense to me. So I, I think you've got a long way to go with this one.
The reason we selected the I2 property is because it's so hard to find any property that would be accepting of this that's outside of an industrial area. No, we're, I'm happy to, you know, scrap the outdoor stage. I don't need that. That's really not that important. And as I said, I can knock off half of the area that the alcohol will be conserved just immediately. Because-
Those are all things you need to do in the next-
We will do that. What, what do you, what do you, tell me your vision for the sign? What do you all want?
I, it's not us, but I-
First-time rookie, sorry. Okay.
How long?
You've heard the concern that Commissioners have shared with the folks of the neighbors. So you at least got something to think about in the past.
Okay.
Do we need to address-
Solid pay if you have the design for you. It's really not our role.
Does the drainage have to be addressed? Does the drainage have to be addressed? Since that's something to work out in engineering?
My question, Chairman, is, Charles, is two weeks enough? Or do you want to go into-
Probably not. We'll go a month.
That, February 12th, huh?
I move continuance until February 12th.
Excuse me, a motion in a second to continue item 28 to February 12th. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Item 29, P C 10405 to rezone 9321 South Santa Fe from double A to R1.
Good afternoon. Mark Melton, on behalf of the applicant. Commissioners, this is a, a piece of land that C L Sue owns. It's six acres and what he'd like to do with it, he lives on the land currently and intends to stay there. He would like to take the land that's currently zoned agricultural and have it rezoned residential and sell either half-acre to two-acre lots. And, and have a, a home no smaller than 2,500 square foot built on those particular lots.
Are you anticipating city water and sewer?
Yes.
My first question is, has he thought through the compatibility of what's around him? And I'm not saying his site per se, but there's, there's very large lots to the west. Looks like larger than regular R1 lots to the north and, and certainly to the south. So R1 zoning, which allows lots to go down to 6,000 square feet, does not appear to be compatible or appropriate. Now, you said we want an acre or one acre, a half-acre or acre lots. I don't know how large these lots are in or not, but I, I question the compatibility at this point. And, you know, maybe you want to go to an R A zoning. I, I, I don't know. I'm, I just question the compatibility and whether or not you've addressed that.
Just out of curiosity, everything around it, except for to the east, is R1. And I, I get you, Nick. It looks to me like these don't look like one-acre lots down here to the south.
Zoning may be R1, but that's not how it-
That's developed.
-developed out. And so I, you know, I'm, I'm questioning the compatibility. You know, if that's, you know, this isn't a, a P U D. It's a straight R1 zoning. And so-
They could put 6,000-
Not that it's your client's intent, but-
I get your-
He flips the straight R1 zoning to me and I come in and I put in as many cookie cutters, 6,000 square lots as I can.
Understand your concern. And the only thing I would say is that, is, is Dr. Sue lives on, on the property and he has a financial interest. He has no intention. He's going to retire there. He is about to retire and doesn't want to take care of the six, six acres. So he, well, he has a financial interest and seem to it that they're nice homes built in.
I, I understand it. And my, my suggestion is he could perhaps tweak his application, put it in a P U D or whatever to require a larger lot than the base R1 zoning would allow. You know, you say that's our tent, but if we just give it a basic R1, we, we lose control of it.
I understand your concern.
We've got three people signed up. So I'm going to call on them to hear what their concerns are. And I'm going to ask if someone who speaks before you raises the concern that you have, would ask that you not repeat the same concerns. Mike LaBelle?
Yes, my name is Mike LaBelle and I live on, off of Santa Fe there. And one thing I'd like to say, Mr. Sue has not lived in that house in eight years. He's been trying to sell it for eight years. He might show up once a month and stay the night, but that's it.
Okay, well, that's not going to be an issue for us. The issue is really what the application is concerned.
Well, I'd also like to know how they're planning on egressing that area up there because all that property on Santa Fe is all flood zone. There is-
Well, it appears that there's a drive there now, is that not correct?
Yes, there's a driveway, yes. And it floods over when lightning creek.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
No, that's it.
Thank you very much for coming down. Linda Ingram? I'm going to ask you to give, give us your name and pull the microphone down so we can hear you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Linda Ingram. I live at 9309 South Santa Fe. The west side of my property borders Mr. Sue's property that he's wanting to change on. My husband and I, my late husband and I bought this property in 1987. I have lived there since 1987. I have a 5,000-square-foot home there. I don't want to see any of the, I don't want to see this changed to, for, to residential. I want it to keep the same rate as agriculture. I have a, I believe that if this is allowed to be split up in these little lots or acreages or what they're being called, it's going to reduce my property value. And I can also say for Mr. LaBelle that I don't believe that the doctor whom it was said that is wanting to retire there has lived there in many, many years. And I would like to know how this property is going to be accessed. Are they planning on putting in another driveway in, another road in? I mean, I don't know if they're wanting another road off of Santa Fe into their property. I would like all those questions answered.
The only place that abuts a public road is Santa Fe, so that would, access would be taken from Santa Fe at some point. Do you observe agricultural activity on this land now?
Not at present, but I want to leave this property that I own to my children and my grandchildren. And we moved here from Clinton, Oklahoma, where we were herder cattle breeders. And I don't want, one of the main reasons we purchased that property is so we could have more than a one-acre tract that was zoned agriculture. Again, I've owned it since 1987. And I'm a widow there.
Well, land uses change over time and zoning changes occur over time. And not all things stay the same forever. It's not necessarily realistic that you ask an adjoining property owner not to do anything with their property because you like the view or the privacy it affords you. The only proactive effort one can take is to buy the adjoining property if one wants it to remain as it is. So something will happen with this property, whether it's what's- So something will happen with this property, whether it's what's requested today or not. It will eventually become residential because it's surrounded by residential. So I know you don't want to hear that, but I'm afraid it's inevitable that is what will occur.
Well, I appreciate your information very much. I would like to ask for a continuance on my behalf so that I may consult with an attorney.
We will have, we'll take that under consideration. I can't tell you whether we will continue the item or not yet.
Thank you.
Have to take that up. Thank you for coming down. Phyllis Boudreaux. Something new?
I just wanted to know, I'm at 9315 South Santa Fe, so I'm just north of where the doctor lives. And the access into that property because of where I'm located and where he's located and where the creek runs, where would the access be to that back plot?
That would have to be designed by an engineer or a landscape designer once the property was zoned, so...
And we did try to buy the property behind us and we were not allowed to. We went through the real estate agent and we tried.
That's the free market. The design or layout would be something we would see later. We will not know by rezoning this what...
It doesn't have anything to do with the zoning?
Well, it would then have to be platted. And when it's, when it's platted is when we actually see how the owner proposes to construct the lots, where he plans to put the streets, where, how he plans to handle drainage and so forth.
And would we, would we be sent the information when it's plotted so that we would know?
Yes. Yeah, we would get notice.
Okay.
I, to answer your question specifically whether it doesn't have anything to do with it, there definitely is a relationship between the zoning and the plating. The zoning it receives will determine the size of the lots that the plating will accommodate. So you're right to be here now and to be voicing your concerns. It's not just that what you have to say is irrelevant to this consideration, but specifically where the driveway will be located, for instance, will be determined later.
So what is this for right now? Just to rezone it?
Just to...
That's exactly right.
That's exactly what it is.
And then after that, we would get any other information pertaining to the property itself?
When, when the owner came in and decided to develop the property, they would come in with a preliminary plat for our approval. So that, that would be the next opportunity to see exactly what would be planned for the site if in fact it were to be rezoned, which it has not been yet.
Right. Because the only thing that we're concerned about is it's landlocked. There are...
Not, ma'am, what the gentleman explained to us earlier, I think we've all agreed that there's an access off of Santa Fe right now. Okay?
Oh, at the residence.
Well, but this, this entire tract now, they will, will design, and I'm, I'm not trying to design it for them, but if that's the only place there is access off of Santa Fe, that's where a street would come in. And then what I would envision is they would build a street that would come in off of Santa Fe and curve and go north, and they would have lots on both sides of that street. And he was saying there's six acres here and he's saying they want a half acre lot, so I would expect to see 10 or 12 lots. And that was part of my concern, whether those lots would be too small to be compatible with what was around it. But, you know, we will see that at the preliminary plat stage if this application goes forward.
However, comma, if we rezone it to R1 today, then they come in with 6,000 square foot lots, the die is...
Die is cast.
Being cast.
Yeah, that's correct.
So I think to the applicant, I know, I agree with your point earlier, Nick, which I was a little slow coming around to. Apologize for that. But I don't think I'm in favor of rezoning this to R1.
No.
Okay? Personally. And so if you can count to five, I don't think you've got five sitting up here right now and you're rezoning to R1 request.
Well, not straight R1.
Not straight R1, exactly. Now, some other, I'm not unsympathetic to half acre lots potentially or something like that, or an SPUD that kind of designs it and lets us know what's going in there versus a straight R1. I don't, I don't think you've got the...
We do not have the power to condition R1 zoning. I mean, we either approve it or we don't.
Right.
And it stands as per the order.
Exactly. So I guess we just deny this, right? And then they got to come back with some other application.
But the applicant was, come up and responded.
He can decide what he wants to do.
We'll hear from the applicant.
I just, we didn't exactly know what was going on because it's his driveway that goes to the back.
Yeah.
And there's a large residence by his driveway. So if that's turned into a road, that 5,000 square foot home would have to come down. So it's a little...
That may, that may have nothing to do with where the road would ultimately be proposed.
So that's something in the future.
Yeah, that's...
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Mr. Melton?
Recognizing the realities of my situation.
Yeah.
I would like to ask the Commission for a continuance.
Yeah, I would take Commissioner Hensley's suggestion and maybe consider an SPUD for this site where you would have some description of what the minimum lot sizes would be and so forth, which would at least tell the neighbors the next time they come down to hear the rezoning, what they might potentially expect to see here.
I would also encourage you to meet with your neighbors and see if there is a way that you can alleviate the concerns that they have.
Certainly once you have defined a little better exactly what you're going to do and how it would fit, it would behoove you to meet with them and may allay all their concerns.
Understand.
J.J., how much time we need for refiling? You have to renotice? What are we looking?
Let's go to the first meeting in February, February 12th.
That'll be enough time, 30 days?
Mr. Chairman? I'd like to make a, kind of a comment about what you're going to be presenting us with an SPUD. And this goes to the neighbors. They're entitled to redo this property. You're not entitled to have a view of land from your backyard because this is their property to do what it is that you propose to do. Mr. Gale's comments, Hensley's mine, others, you know, is that R1 isn't going to get it. It has to be compatible with the surrounding neighbors and then protective of them ingress, egress, and you got to make it okay. But, but I'm not opposed to your developing it because that's your client's property, but it has to be done in a way that's, that's compatible with the surrounding neighbors.
Understand.
Right. Do you have something else? You need to come to the microphone. We can't hear you.
I will not be here the first week of February, so if you're wanting to do a continuance to that date, I'm wondering if we can set it for a later date.
I have no objection to setting it to a later date. I'm sorry. That would be great.
What about 24th of February then? 26th? Okay, 14 days, you're right. February 26th.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. So we'll take a motion.
Go move.
Second. We have a motion and a second to continue item 29 to February 26th. Cast your votes and it's continued.
Item 30 is CE 899 to close a portion of the driveway along the north side of West Sheridan and to close a portion of the easement west alley located on north, north of West Sheridan between Hudson and Walker.
Good afternoon. David Box, 552 Call Core Drive here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Paul LaFevere. This is a closing application in conjunction with the new 499 Sheridan project, which is the new office tower development going on downtown. This was heard immediately preceding this meeting, like moments before, and the Downtown Design Review Committee did recommend approval, did suggest a recommendation of approval for this closing application.
I sure wish I'd heard all of that discussion.
I've got a three hour presentation if you want to hear it.
Nice. You haven't had lunch yet?
No, he brought me a gluten free oat bar. It was good.
Sweet. Anybody stand up? Any changes?
There's, yeah, there's some changes that, to the approval language that Aubrey will read to us.
Are you all aware of any adjustments to the conditions that Public Works reviewed?
No.
Okay. I have some language here. The staff report has two conditions. Number two currently reads pedestrian access and access for emergency vehicles must be provided. We're recommending that be changed to emergency egress for building occupants instead of pedestrian access. And then adding an additional condition that reads commercial vehicle access for businesses to facilitate loading and unloading. Be maintained.
Say that last one.
Commercial vehicle access for business, for businesses to facilitate loading and unloading.
There will be gates on this property. We will have three gates through this alley. One where it starts, one about the halfway point, and then one over on Hudson. So I'm not sure what...
How does that respond to Public Works' concern about ingress and egress for supporting the people that are there?
The thing that worries me is commercial vehicle access. It's going to be privatized with our ability to control who enters and exits. So I'm not sure what they're referring to about commercial vehicle access. I mean, I'll apologize for that. When were these comments?
They were handed to me before the meeting and I'm not sure when the conversation took place.
Paul LaFevere, we've met with the Public Works Director on this and there's a, I think, a clear understanding as to what he's expecting in this area. And the request on his part was to have a ability to contact the security people at the, at the new tower with allowing trucks to come through if, if necessary. And there's no issue with that, but he was quite comfortable with that. And the furthest west gate will be on the west edge of 420 West Main. And so the businesses to the west are not affected by this.
I think the intention is to allow deliveries to come maybe to the 420 building. Obviously, we're fine with that. But I defer.
Dennis Clowers with the manager's office. I happened to be watching and heard the comments about egress. Obviously, the city is going to still have the 420 West Main building and will have employees in there, will have deliveries that will come down that alley, and we obviously need access for trucks or whatever to be able to come in and out of the alley. I'm not sure if emergency egress from the building needs to be provided in the alley because there's only one door out the front. So I, that might have been part of what Eric was talking about too, but I know for a fact that we're talking about delivery trucks that bring materials and goods to the 420 West Main building.
Excuse me. The portion of the alley to the west, which is open to 420 and the property is west of it, what's the width of that alley?
I don't...
You may not know, but I'm asking...
I don't know, 20 feet maybe?
Which would be enough for two vehicles to pass. 20 feet, would that allow?
I doubt seriously if a, if a automobile and a delivery truck could pass each other.
I'm just thinking about a traffic conflict with...
I know you can't see this very well, but if you see this notch, it's being constructed so a truck can come in, turn around, and go back out. Everybody see that? The notch?
Sure.
David, I see it.
Okay, and the 420 building is the great part. Okay.
David? What's the radius of the, is it a, what about cul-de-sac?
Sure, David? Show that to Dennis.
Box showed me actually physically works with the size of trucks that need to come in and out of there, I don't see a problem with it.
Well, are we in a hurry? I mean, does this have to be done today? Can't you guys kind of work this out and bring a little more...
Well, that's why I was... Mr. Chairman, a minute ago, his comment was, we haven't heard the last of this? I suspect that's true.
We did meet with Mr. Winger and it's designed so that a 30 foot truck can do anything necessary for these buildings.
I guess my comment would be, you know, if there's confusion on this point, the drawing looked okay to me, okay? But if there's confusion on this point, why can't we continue this for two weeks and get on the same page? Yeah, it's a big deal.
There's no confusion. It's been worked out. We designed it with...
Can't hear you, David, to the microphone.
There is no confusion. It's been designed, worked out. We've, I'm not sure why it's coming up right now. This was worked out with Mr. Winger and everybody understands the way this is...
I guess that's my problem. We chastise applicants for coming in here at the last minute, pulling up a sheet of paper and said, I want to do this. All of a sudden, a sheet of paper falls down and we don't know where it came from. It just, somebody just handed it to Aubrey and we don't know when. Guys, what's going on? It cuts both ways.
We just want to close the alley.
No, I understand that. And I don't think anybody has a problem with closing the alley. After the protracted hearing I sat in portion of this morning, I don't think there's, from a committee standpoint anyway, I think that they've made the decision to go forward and demolish the building.
I think, I think this clarification was just to make it clear on that second condition that you'd retain access for emergency vehicles and those commercial vehicles that service the 420 building. That, that's my interpretation of this, just being a clarification of that to confirm that that would be maintained.
I have a question, looking at the diagram, is it really just the first three blocks on the west?
The first three blocks.
It gets you all the way over to 420 West Main, the south side of the building?
Yes. The, just... Every, I think we're all on the same page, as long as everybody understands there's gates. But this has been hashed out more than you can imagine with Public Works. So it's, everything's going to work together and what we're asking for is appropriate and necessary to push forward this project. So we would ask for your approval. And we've got plenty of time to work with whoever we need to between now and council, but I would ask that...
Then what does the condition say?
Why don't we agree?
Number two.
Why don't we...
What does it say? You want approval with conditions, but let's, let's agree on what the condition is. It's, it's, so if there's a question about what that condition ought to be, then maybe I'm just saying, suggesting that we get that worked out.
I guess I can say commercial vehicles and emergency vehicles, access for those must be provided.
Dan? Everybody all right with that?
If I'm looking at the diagram...
Mike, you okay?
It's clear.
Mike? Mike's not okay, see?
The older I get, the less okay I get.
Oh, yeah, it's okay.
Mike Wilson with the Fire Marshal's Office. We had concerns, and we really didn't have a problem with the language of the TE as far as just maintaining access. They haven't really talked with us about what we're going to have. One of the problems of the 420 Building is that both stairs discharge to that alley. And code-wise, you can't take them all the same direction. You're supposed to go, be able to go in two different directions. So that's kind of our issue on the pedestrian access, how they're going to get out of the back of the building, because the stairs don't dump into the lobby and out the north side of the building. And so that's just been a little bit of our concern. We know we'll have gates, and we'll have locks, locks on those so that we can get through with vehicles. But part of the problem was the pedestrian emergency access, not just for anybody wanting to walk through there, but something tied into the egress of the, the back of 420.
Look, help me with that. We have, 420 is what it is. So if we had a fire today and we need to evacuate that building, we'd take them down and out the back door to the, to the south.
That's where the stairs discharge.
And today, you would sit in two directions.
That part of the alley is still open. So we'd come down, we'd still go out the south door. So I guess...
Right now, the alley goes in either east or west direction. You can go out to Walker or over to Hudson. And with the closing, we're going to lose that.
We go out to Walker. I mean, that's the way you'd go anyway.
Well, again, 100% of the building occupants aren't supposed to go the same direction, the same exit out that east, out to the west side toward Walker. And when you have 100% of the building occupants discharging into that alley, you're supposed to have two ways to go.
So are you telling me that the city has a building that's not compliant?
No, I'm saying currently, the alley is compliant.
Currently, it is. The problem currently, it is.
I was teasing. That was facetious.
So they, they want to, if they wanted to run to the east, they could do that. There will be gates, but they could do that. And this is really a design issue, not an issue to whether or not it's appropriate to close this.
Right. And that's again why we didn't really have a problem with the TE the way it was written, because it just said that access was going to be maintained. We obviously need to work some of that out, but as long as the access is going to be maintained, we would be fine. We understand it's going to be...
If I'm the third person out of the building, how do I turn left and go to Hudson? How do I unlock the gate?
I'm sorry?
In the event, unlikely event, that the building has to be evacuated in an emergency situation, and I'm coming down the stairs with a bunch of my coworkers, and we're trying to kind of go in two directions so there's a quick flow, and I'm the first one that wants to turn toward Hudson because they're all backed up going to Walker, how do I open the gate?
We will, in design, we will ensure that that is not a problem.
Because if I can walk down and open the gate, Nick can walk over there and just go through.
The thing is, it, it's not just a design issue. It's a legal issue. You close the alley, and it's vacated, then we don't have a right to demand public access. And that's, that's what that means. So I, I...
And here, here's the bottom line. We have been working with multiple divisions within city staff to make sure that this works for this block, that it works with the existing city building, and that will continue. This is not going to happen in a vacuum. It's going to happen in collaboration with the city to make sure that everybody's on board and happy with the way this works.
Dennis?
Mr. Chairman, yes. The, the city engineer is fully aware that those gates are going to be in place, and we have no problem with the gates being there. I really do think this is a design issue, as Mr. Box said, as long as, as we've got access, emergency access for people coming out of the building to get into the alley and out, and as long as the delivery trucks have access, whether the gate there is there or not, and the smaller trucks can turn around and go back out the way they came, then we have no problem with it.
Okay. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? We've talked...
Yeah, again, I, the, the TE that was there that said access would be maintained for emergency pedestrian vehicle, we don't have a problem with that wording. My concern is if we start trying to word that where it's only in one direction or...
Yeah. Okay. So if we look at the second staff recommendation and just flip the words around a little bit and say, "Emergency access, emergency pedestrian and emergency vehicle access must be provided," that would seem to respond to everything I'm hearing.
And we can resolve how, what form that type...
That would seem to be just fine.
Does that satisfy everybody?
Should it be in both directions?
So with that modification to item two, are we okay? Commercial vehicle access for business to facilitate loading and unloading. I assume we're talking, as Mr. Box said, about the west end of the alley?
Right.
And the developers can worry about their own building and how they're going to supply it?
Correct.
But we need to add that, right?
Pardon?
It doesn't say that right now. It doesn't speak to commercial vehicles. So we need to add three.
Yeah.
We've clarified two, we need to add three. Because it doesn't, nothing says here anything about three, about commercial vehicles.
I think that's fine. I mean, Public Works understands that, that's why it's designed...
Again, I'll repeat it for you. Commercial vehicle access for businesses to facilitate loading and unloading will be provided.
Yep.
It's acceptable.
All right. So those are now the conditions. We've changed number two, moved the words around, and added number three about...
And my question is, how is that closing? I don't, I don't get it.
It's allowing us to put gates up.
We're going to let them put gates up across a public right-of-way is what it sounds like to me.
No. We're going to close and vacate it and put gates up. So there will still be access in reality, but it's our right to control it with these...
And I'm, I'm not going for that. It's like, we're going to close it and vacate it, but there'll still be access in reality. Legally, there will be no ability to control that access if it's closed and vacated. Period.
Well, I, I do think it's worth pointing out that this issue has been extensively discussed with staff. It was extensively reviewed by the DDRC this morning, and a 100% wholeheartedly recommended approval of exactly what you're seeing.
Well, and maybe we ought to refine the language to say, "Except for lots 22, 23, and 24," which then makes clear that your request for closing does not extend to Walker, which is what you're going to do anyway.
Our application doesn't extend to Walker, so we don't need to add language.
Yeah.
And we didn't apply to Walker.
Well, if it makes it clear to Janice that we're not talking about the western end... She's trying to help you, David.
Yeah.
I know. What's the pleasure of the commission?
Well, I'm going to make a motion. We approve the application with the modification of TE two and the addition of TE three that's read.
And the changing the language in TE two?
Yeah, modification of TE two and, and then the addition of TE three.
Just as curiosity, did the downtown design review committee provide us a recommendation regarding this? They were in favor of this, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but we're better than they are.
At least a little faster.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 30 as conditioned, changing the wording in TE two and adding a TE three or staff advisory comment, however you want to describe it. Cast your votes. It's approved.
Item 31 is TE 6688, the preliminary plat of Northbrook Edition located east of Rockwell and north of Northwest 150th.
David Box, 522 Call Core Drive here on behalf of the applicant. This is a preliminary plat, which is consistent with the PUD that we showed you when we came through the zoning process. At the time, you'll recall, there were some questions about traffic, and we advised that traffic study was in the works. It has been completed, and what it reflects is that this development does not warrant any traffic improvements. Some of the improvements have been committed to by the developer that came through, I believe, either the last time or the time before on the commercial portion. There are a handful of TEs to address. Number five, we would ask that that be deleted. I've talked to JJ. That TE is inconsistent with the PUD that was approved by both this body and City Council, and he had agreed that that should be deleted. And TE number two, I would also ask that that be deleted based on the, you know, my explanation of the traffic issue. I'm not sure what the, the TE is, is asking for. We do have our traffic engineer who is here that can address any specific questions to traffic if the commission desires.
We, we do still. Do we not, JJ, have somebody from traffic back there?
And that comment about TE number two was curious, but it says, "They may be warranted." Like, come on, you know, are they or not? And, you know, like, to approve the application with, with a, who knows? Well, that's the same thing. I just didn't, I didn't understand. Either, either they have to be there based upon traffic analyses, or they don't have to be there.
Sure.
And I just didn't understand that TE, loosey-goosey as it is. And, and I understand what your curiosity would be about what TE number two says.
Sorry, I didn't hear anything.
Welcome to the microphone. We're on item 31. We're looking at TE number two.
Okay.
And the comment is, "Traffic improvements may be warranted at the intersection of Northwest 150th and Rockwell as part of this development."
And that was not a comment from traffic. Our comment was that the previous development of Rockwell Park had been required by this body to put a signal in at 70 lots. And a signal is required as part of, to maintain traffic at this intersection, but it was required as part of a previous development.
What was the...
I don't know. That was not our TE.
It's a carryover TE. We're familiar with those.
Place an error.
Here comes Terry. Came from Terry.
My TE.
Oh.
Yeah, it's really based on the, the comments from the traffic analysis and traffic's reviews. So it's really up to the planning commission based on what was done for Rockwell Village, and then now this new preliminary is here with some traffic concerns possibly, but they may not know what they might be, because when the final plat comes, there might be improvements already made to that intersection, or that's why we're not really sure what kind of traffic improvements might be required.
The traffic improvements required have been agreed to by another developer. And our traffic report's clear, traffic staff obviously is clear, so we would ask that that be deleted.
Well, the last guy in is going to wind up with a big problem because that area's going to be pretty dense and heavily populated.
Well, the last guy, not the last guy in, but the last guy already put a signal in.
So, Commissioners, we either leave it in or take it out. It's your...
Anybody to speak on this application?
Pardon me?
Any protest?
No. No one signed up.
Chairman, I'd move approval of the application deleting TE five and the TE two. Yes, I can, I don't understand. It goes nowhere. May be a problem in the future, sort of kind of, maybe?
Well, I think that was my comment. I didn't understand.
Yeah, and so...
And so it doesn't have any teeth in it anyway.
And from what Terry just said, I don't...
Actually, what it means is that the applicant should be aware that there might be traffic improvements required when they bring in a final plat. That's why it just says that they may be warranted. So David's not agreeing with that.
That may be worth keeping.
That may be, that may be worth putting in the body of the text, not a TE. I mean, legally, how can I agree to a TE that says "may"? I mean, I agree this might come out tomorrow.
I think you just agree that you're aware that they may be warranted.
I acknowledge that there are traffic engineers...
We can fix it, change "may" to "shall." How's that?
And we don't agree to that. It's contrary to what the traffic engineers say.
But if we, if we approve this application deleting TE two and five, but two particularly, then you go on and do your development of 300 and some lots, and then all of a sudden there's a traffic jam. I mean, so when there's a traffic jam, then at that point, then it's up to the city to fix it.
The, the improvement has been agreed to by another developer.
No, no, stop, stop, stop.
I'm not sure that's...
That improvement is already there, okay? That's not what Terry's talking about. Terry's talking about when we get to the final plat, there may be different conditions than today, okay? Which is a situation we have every final plat we, we see.
Sure.
And traffic has the opportunity at those times to raise those issues with the final plat. I've never seen a TE like this that says, "Well, maybe sort of kind of in the future, I'm putting you on notice." That, that's all I'm saying. I, I think we routinely do that if, if there's been a change and, and traffic has concerns. You know, sometimes we see plats that are approved at the preliminary stage, and years go by, and there are dramatic changes. We just saw one not long ago out on Northwest 10th Street. Preliminary plat was fine when, by the time we got to the final, we had all sorts of tweaking. And matter of fact, we even had a new traffic study at the final plat stage.
So I don't...
Perfect. That's, that's what I wanted to know. You know, give it another shot.
My concern, I don't want to be precluded at some future time from saying, I don't want, let me just put it this way. Due respect to the applicant, I don't want the applicant to say, "Hey, you guys looked at this traffic issue at preliminary, and you deleted that TE and basically came to a finding that no traffic concerns may arise with respect to this particular development." So I'm, I'm concerned. It was sensitive enough that Mr. Box raised it as a question that he doesn't want to have to deal with it later. Well, why would we not want to deal with it at this juncture?
I raised it because it's highly unusual for a traffic-related TE to be inserted from somebody not in traffic. And traffic says, "Well, I don't know. They wouldn't have put that in there." And so that's why I raised it, because that's fairly unusual. I mean, our, our traffic engineer in the study, which contemplates full build-out, shows it still operates at a level of a C as advised in the comprehensive plan. So that's what my, my, I have to raise it because my traffic guy says, "I don't know where it came from. I talked to traffic staff. They didn't put it in there."
Well, I, I guess my question or, or problem is, or question, how are we precluded on approving preliminary plats without this type of language in it from doing something different on traffic?
I think, I think Mike answered your question. A clever legal advisor would say, "You deleted that traffic warning, therefore approving our application without traffic, and you did an affirmative action. You did something affirmative to remove the traffic issue." And a clever lawyer come the final plat stage is going to have that argument. I swear, I would.
No.
And that's why I think perhaps leaving it in is no harm, no foul.
And I disagree.
I'm sure, because it's what I said and what Mike said.
But, but as Mr. Gale said, every single preliminary plat that had ever come across this body's for voting, you would have to put that in.
Then, Bob, what you're saying is, we're going to start every preliminary plat, and start off with TE one that says engineering must be met. TE two's going to be, this, this TE, traffic may change in the future, and we're not bound by it on a preliminary plat. We never have been bound by it.
There is a recording of this hearing that identifies exactly what Commissioner Hensley's concerned. My concern would be about precedent, is that if it's absolutely unnecessary to have TE two in, and it establishes absolutely no precedent for the time when you come in with a final plat that does then have a traffic issue, that we are fully capable at that time to address traffic at the final plat stage.
You are.
But, Bob, on the other hand, why didn't we do it on all these other developments that developed up that road? Why didn't we do that?
Well, but, but this is the... Well, but this is the first time.
Okay, but let's, let's don't hold this guy to the feet to the fire with that TE.
No, but this is the first time I've ever seen this.
I understand, first time I've ever seen it too.
And does it, I mean, it just, it's one of those fuzzy things that a clever lawyer might use at the final plat stage when there's chaos out there and you said, no, you guys...
Have you got a motion on the floor?
No.
I thought we had a motion on the floor.
Might we all simply agree that if in future, when you come forward with a final plat, questions are raised about traffic that you will not be taken unawares?
I'm not going to stand here and say you blew your chance back on January 15th.
Let's hold each other out.
Yeah. Nick, we repeat your motion. My motion was for approval with the deletion of TE25.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
And I will expand my motion before we vote, Chairman, to say TE2, it was not warranted and not needed. That gives any clever lawyer...
At this time. At this time?
At this time.
At this time. Fine. Or any, does that satisfy you, Mr. Clever Lawyer?
All right, cast your votes. And it's approved at this time. Thank you. About all the fun I can have.
That may be the closest you ever come to having a compliment from Bob Bright.
Item 32 is C 6687, the final plat of the Vintages at Camden Park, Section 1, located west of Western and south of Northwest 164th.
Hello, my name is Greg Massey with Red Plains, representing the developer on this project. We've reviewed staff comments on the TEs and have no objection to any of those other than item number five, which is the reference to the 15-foot utility easement along the south property line. After numerous hours with engineering staff, our sanitary sewer line is being located along Northwest 163rd Street. We are providing a 10-foot utility easement across the back. We're providing additional 5-foot utility easement across the front of those lots, combined with a 50-foot street right-of-way. We feel like we've met all the utility easement requirements.
Do we have a letter from the developer talking about the recreational amenities?
That letter is being prepared. All the items in this, as of the time that I received them, are in process of being prepared. I did forward to Terry Massey earlier today an acknowledgement that the clubhouse amenities and facilities would be permitted and constructed prior to issuance of any CO on any other structure.
You were involved in the preliminary plat stage, were you not?
Yes.
There was language in that?
Yes.
That said this information would be provided before we heard the final plat?
Again, I...
And next time, you need to have it in?
Yes.
And you also heard the comment about final plats, maybe ought to be mostly on the consent docket?
Yes, sir.
We'd hope you'd take that to heart as well.
Okay.
No one has signed up, commissioners?
Well, I'm a little confused on, on TE5.
Yes, sir.
We're asking for a 15-foot easement. Basically, what you're telling me was we have two. We have a 5 and a 10, one in front, one in back.
That's correct.
And I guess my question, I'm looking at Curtis now, does that satisfy our need? You know, can I dig up my sewer line in a 10-foot easement?
I was hoping, compared to legal and public works, I don't think that that might want to be here. But in the drainage easement, the 15-foot is the minimum width. I'm not sure as far as on the utility, specific utility.
Well, I'm going to get into the battle of the engineers here.
We'll hear from Terry, who can give us an engineering opinion.
The sanitary sewer is in the front this time and so Nathan did send me an email saying that 10-foot utility easement in the rear is fine. There is, all lots are served with a 15-foot utility easement in the front within the right-of-way. So everything's cool.
So we're good with deleting TE5?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
And again, no one signed up.
I am, as the chairman, troubled by the fact that, you know, we worked very hard on this preliminary plat back the first part of the summer. It had worked out and we've had months to go by and we still have preliminary TEs on it. We need to do better with that. But with that, I'll, I'll move approval with the deletion of TE5.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 32, deleting TE5. Cast your votes and it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Items 33, 34, and 35 were continued and item 36 was brought back up to be heard in order, which is item C 6685, the final plat of Northwood Village, Section 1, located north of Northwest Expressway and east of Northwood Drive.
Again, Kendall Dillon with Crafton Toll, representing the applicant, and we do appreciate you allowing us to be heard today. In regards to obviously file plat, first section, in regards to the TE, the first two TEs are obviously standard TEs. TE number three pertains to the construction of a right turn lane. That is something that not only did we agree to, but my client desires to have and those improvements or that plan has been submitted to staff, so they have that now. On TE number four, regards to a pedestrian access to the school, and we have every intention and we can commit to that today as well, however, it will be, the location we'd like to put it is just to the east of what is the westernmost portion of this plat. So it's about one lot off. There's an existing easement, there's some topographic things that are going on there that that makes the best logical location to put that access there. So if we could, we'd like to amend TE number four to read that we'll provide it but with the future phase if possible. And TE number five just simply is, is that there appears to be some of the lots over 6,000 square feet or under, they are all over 6,000 square feet. We've provided a lot schedule, two staff that illustrates the square footage on every lot. They're all in excess of 6,000 square feet. TE number six is obviously just a street name and then the last two are standard TE. So with that, like I say, if we could amend TE3 and we'll agree to the rest of them and we'd ask for your approval.
No one has signed up, commissioners, and we're hearing this, Kendall, because you fell on your sword this morning, so.
Exactly.
Appreciate that.
I'm sorry, you zipped right through that a little too fast for me. The notes that I made to myself were about your provision of amenities. This phase is 114 homes, right?
Correct. 114, correct.
And so my questions are about the amenities and also the pedestrian access to the school.
Okay, the pedestrian access to the school will be provided. We would like to provide it in a future phase. Our plan is, like I say, if you see the westernmost portion of our plat, one lot to the east is the location that we are planning a 20-foot pedestrian access to the school. There are some things going on topographically there, sanitary sewer, there's already an easement, plus it just, there's a, like I say, there's some topographic things going on there that makes a good location to put that access. So that's our plan as to where we'd like to put the access to the school. In regards to the common area and the amenities, you're right, currently with these two phases, the way that where our entrance is located, if you'll notice, we have 114 lots total, but we are separated. We've got 30 on one side, we've got 80 something on, 84 on the other side. We are planning on putting those amenities in with phase two, our next phase. However, with this phase, the way that it's configured, we'd like to be able to proceed on and like I say, we'll make that commitment to put those amenities in with phase two.
Nick, you had something?
Well, I have a question.
I'm sorry, I'm not quite finished.
Go ahead.
The pedestrian access, you said, future, you didn't say phase two?
Well, if you look at it, there's a location that we want to put the pedestrian access that we think from a development standpoint makes sense. So that is where we would like to put that pedestrian access. What we do not know is whether or not phase two will include that portion or if phase two is further to the north. If phase two is further to the north, then obviously it won't even be adjacent to the school. So what we'd like to do, however we need to word it, I mean, if we want to word it that the, a phase that abuts the westernmost portion, that the pedestrian access will be provided, then we'd be fine with that.
I mean, would it be possible, we do this, you know, temporary emergency vehicle access? I mean, I actually drive on Northwest Expressway with regularity and it is just becoming more and more of a traffic nightmare, which is not news to any of you guys, I'm sure. And the idea, I would really like for however many kids there are that live out there to be able to get to school, you know, without having to get out on these roads, either Northwood or Northwest Expressway. So I mean, is there some way that you can provide temporary emergency pedestrian access to the school so that whoever it is that lives out there can get their kids to school?
Sure. I'm Mark Livingston, I'm the developer. I'd like to say one other thing. Northwood Drive, where you don't necessarily want the children, we've agreed to put a 5-foot sidewalk along that, not that it's required because it's not arterial, but you've asked us to do that because of the school and there's a sidewalk along the school. So we're going to continue that sidewalk all the way down Northwood for pedestrian access. So we are going to have that in phase one also. Sure, we'll be glad to go ahead and put a temporary access at the edge of phase one. I mean, we can put some concrete in and tear it out at a later date and I'm unobjectable to that. My only concern is we need to make sure that Piedmont School, I mean, if they block me from doing it, that'd be a different issue, but we're agreeable to that. As our engineer alluded to, we're the ones that asked for that right turn deceleration land off Northwest Expressway. We're family friendly, we want this to be the right way, so sure, we'll do that.
Now I'm done.
Nick? This for staff, I guess. The staff comment was the final plat fails to conform with requirements made in the preliminary plat in the zoning district development regulation. My question is, was that purely because of TE5 that the lots were undersized and now that has been addressed?
That was before we got his...
Right, but, but there wasn't another issue other than the undersized lots or the... Okay, very good.
No one signed up? Mr. Anderson?
Okay, so then we're going to move approval and we're going to, you're okay with leaving TE3, right? You've done it already, but it didn't...
Correct.
Right, so that's not an issue. TE4 pedestrian access will be provided in a future phase, but you will provide some sort of temporary access to the school with this phase?
Correct.
Correct? Okay. And then TE5 can be deleted because that's been taken care of?
Correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 36 as conditioned. Cast your votes and you're approved.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
The remaining items on the agenda are continued or withdrawn.
Planning Commission committees, planning commissioners, any discussion items?
Todd? I just have one minor item and I visited with Cindy about this, but the parking passes that we were, we acquired today are requested to be put on the decal, it's supposed to be on the driver's side of the rear window, and I just am concerned that you're not going to be able to see any of them for those of us that have tinted back glass. I think that that's going to be an issue. I've already mentioned that to Cindy and so I would just caution anyone of putting it on there right this second because I don't think that that's going to be a viable option.
I think the traffic, people who come along and, you know, look at traffic meters and get issued tickets will look closely. I mean, I've had stickers like that in my cars for probably four or five years and...
Yeah, but Todd's windows are dark.
My cars are tinted.
So are mine.
And...
As dark as mine. You can't see it in mine.
One of those really, really dark windows.
That's right.
Okay. Mine are not quite that dark. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to invite whoever would like to attend to a meeting on this coming Monday at First Southern Baptist Church, 6400 South Center on what was continued today's PC 10-383, which is a rezoning from AA to RA2. And that's at 6 o'clock at First Southern Baptist Church. It's a neighborhood meeting.
If I'm in town, I will be there.
I'm sorry, can I...
6 o'clock Monday, this Monday, whatever that date is.
I'm sorry.
Okay, 6400 South Center.
I'll forget it. Jeff, can you do an email reminder of that, about the view of...
I will, sure.
Do you have emails, addresses?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Planning Department?
Before any of you leave, today we have hard copies of the draft comprehensive plan and we will give these to you. This has been released just last, this week or last week for our final stage of public review and comment, which is a two-month-long period of time. And I'd like to invite everybody to come out to an open house, which is kind of the kickoff of the last stage of the public review and comment period, which is going to be on January 20th, right here in the council chambers at City Hall at 6:00 PM. And it's an open house. We will have a short presentation to familiarize people with what we have in the plan, basic concepts of the plan, and the whole premise of the open house is that our staff will be available for direct conversation with the public. We want to invite people to start their review of the document because as you can see, it is a very lengthy plan. So you can do that in two ways. You can go online, read the plan and provide comments on any piece of it at OKC dot open comment dot US or any local library will have copies of the plan and comment form. So if you'd rather see a tactile copy and do handwritten notes, you're welcome to review it in those two ways. And we hope that you'll come out and have a chance to talk with us and see the product of a lot of time and effort and energy that our community has put into this document over the last four years. And wanted to thank all of you for all of the thoughtful ideas and recommendations that you've contributed, not just over the last four years in developing this plan, but as we've been discussing what our plan needs since we adopted our last plan moving forward.
A brief question. Bob and I talked yesterday and this is both a reorganized document and contains changes. And I think Ken was going to direct us to the areas where we ought to go and look to find those changes.
John sent an email.
Oh, it is?
He sent, he sent an email with all the areas where this has been changed. That was like a couple of hours ago till we discussed that.
Oh, well, I didn't see, didn't know it.
Well, but I don't know if it just came to you and me, but Ken ought to send the email to all of us to show what, what I wanted and John took was what was different between the document, preliminary draft, that was the subject of the mid-December meeting that I couldn't attend, and then as a result of that, where are we now so that we don't have to wade through?
Okay.
But he did send the email.
Great.
Okay.
I'll make sure that that same email goes out to the whole commission.
Yeah, I'd like to know where to focus rather than read all 400 some odd pages. You know, spend another 10 hours on it.
Okay, appreciate it.
Development Services, municipal councillor? Don't go away, I have a question for you. I have one for him. We are adj...